Who's there for the last place?
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Kine.
Here.
Ms. Lawrence.
She's here.
Mrs. Golden. Here is Mr. Fagan.
Here.
Mr. Elswich.
Here. Okay, I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda with the addendum that we've been given.
And then?
The moves are second. Thank you.
Ms. Ward?
Yeah.
Mrs. Kine?
Yeah.
Mrs. Golden yet? Mr. Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Elswich?
Yes.
We'll start three pages.
Yes, President Elswich, members of the board, I would like to have Mr. Rizzo to introduce our first presentation.
All right, a little bit differing today. Our outstanding figures will be presented later in the agenda as we celebrate our seniors who will be graduating this weekend. And today we have a returning guest, so much like late nights, I think. Mr. Hoogler has been before the board before, and he has a very unique experience he just participated in as we work to continue to help choose their next pathway. So, Mr. Rizzo, you will come up.
Good afternoon. My name's Todd Hoogler. I teach entrepreneurship at the high school. At the Institute of High School, we're tasked with, as every school, we're tasked with helping get through each one of their 40s, so employment, enrollment, enlistment, or entrepreneurship. So I do the entrepreneurship piece. One area that I feel like we've been making some progress in, but I wanted to have a firsthand experience with was the area of enlistment. We have recruiters in our building very regularly. We do a good job of putting them front and center in the comments and giving them opportunities to interact with our students. Prior to COVID, I was scheduled to go to Paris Island, South Carolina, and participate in Marine Corps Education Workshop. Basically, they bring educators from all over the country to Paris Island, east of the Mississippi, to Paris Island at several times throughout the course of the year. And we participated in every aspect of Marine Corps boot camp training in two and a half days. Everything they do in 13 weeks, we did in two and a half days. So it was an amazing experience. I was there with 35 other educators from the Columbus and Louisville, Kentucky area. And we were really given a behind-the-scenes look at what it is like to be a recruit. This was our schedule. We started at 5:15 in the morning and didn't finish until 8:30 at night. And we were in the same kinky, sweaty, smelly clothes. Then we started the day in. We did all of our training, all of our meals. We ate with recruits. The first day we were there, we had the opportunity to eat with young people who had only been there two weeks. And it was kind of getting their perspective of what it was like for them to be just kind of new arrivals at Paris Island. And then the next day, we ate with people who were on their second enlistment. And they were teaching, were doing different activities, and doing different things at Paris Island. They really gave us, like I said, the behind-the-scenes look at what opportunities exist in the military for our young people. They focused, and the awesome thing about it is, we met with the commanding general down there, General Field, four times in two and a half days. He, nothing was off the table. We could ask him any questions that we, any thoughts, any concerns, any perspective that we had. And he said, "I only want you to leave here with three things." "One," he said, "I want you to demystify what the Marine Corps is all about. Go back and talk about your experience." We did, like I said, we did everything that they encountered down there, from getting off the bus because our drill instructor, actually, that's Lieutenant Colonel, that's before our drill instructor came on. But when they, we walked the yellow footprints that the Marines walk. The drill instructors really gave us the business, you know, mentally, physically, for the first day we were there, so much so that it was overwhelming for me. I'm thinking to myself, "I'm doing everything you're asking me to do, and I'm getting screened out," and whatever. But then the second day, they kind of give you the process on what it means to become a Marine. One thing that I didn't know about the Marine Corps, unlike a lot of other branches, you don't necessarily know the job you're going to be doing after you get out of boot camp. Everybody, no matter who you are, you are a Marine first, and then your job second. And so it was really kind of, they call it the "spree to court." And it was kind of interesting to have those conversations and really talk with them about, you know, the transformation that these young people make in the 13 weeks that they're there. So they said, the first thing they want us to do, demystify. The second thing they said, when a student expresses interest in any branch of the military, just get them in front of a recruiter. They do not, they said, "We do not want you to convince anybody to join any branch of the military. But if a kid expresses interest, let them talk to a recruiter. And then when the recruiters come in, don't put them in a room somewhere where they don't ever get to interact with kids. Put them, you know, front and center." We do a great job of that. They're always in the comments. We do a really good job of giving students the opportunity to meet with and talk with the different recruiters. And then the third thing they said, they wanted us to do is bring this message back to our communities. And they said, "We want you to send somebody else down, and preferably somebody who might not think of the military in a positive light. Send them down. Let them go through the experience. Let them do everything that you've done, and so that they can offer the perspective of what the Marine Corps is really about." And I think our students, you know, I think all young people, whether they're limited or not, thrive instruction and discipline. And for some people, I think the military career, regardless of branch, is something that we need to make sure that we're making available to our young folks. You know, they talk about, I won't go through all of this, they talk about all of the benefits and, you know, and the two most important jobs at Paris Island are the recruiters to get the kids there and the drill instructors to put them through the transformation of recruits to Marines. And the experience of going and participating in all of that. Like, I started training in November. I was supposed to go do this prior to COVID. Two weeks before I went, they canceled it. And so we got a new recruiter in, and he opened it back up for me to be able to have the opportunity. The Marine Corps pays for all of this. It didn't cost the district anything. It didn't cost me anything, other than having us up. But it was just so that we could come back and give a balanced perspective of opportunities in the military. It was an amazing experience. You know, they have all the benefits to this. A picture of me, this is coming out of the gas chamber. They hadn't run the gas chamber in two days prior to us going, but there were all the particulates still in the air. And so they just opened the doors and we got to go in. And we experienced everything. We did repelling. We did the rifle range. We did the swimming, the swimming activity, all of that. It was an amazing experience. We had a reporter embedded with us for the three days that we were down there from Louisville. And this is just a real quick clip of her describing the experience that we went through.
She's been in Paris Island, South Carolina, all week long documenting the path that she takes becoming a United States Marine. She offers us a firsthand
No pressure.
No pressure, no pressure. I felt terrible for this young lady, whose reporter was with us, because we didn't get finished with our training until at least 8:30 every night. And she had to have her story in by like 9:30, all edited.
Look tonight at 44 days reporter, Oliya Valero, has been in Paris Island, South Carolina, all week long documenting a path that takes becoming a United States Marine. She offers us a firsthand look tonight as recruits complete 91 days of training and finally graduate from boot camp.
Educators from the Louisville Angel of America gather here at their class through the week they experience the passport. Do you want Marines to enjoy a week, two to three days?
We have professional Marines teaching professional educators. We'll be here on a daily basis.
Throughout the day, they take you to the hospital and see you through all the first stories.
It did not feel good. Oh, I certainly walked in, and 30 seconds later, I was I was so personal on what their experience was with the Marine Corps. So they can guide their students to make the more important decisions as they go through and look at the future possibilities.
The workshops are open to every recce station in this country, both in the process of the recruit, training to a Marine, and finally graduation day.
Everyone of them, you want to move down into line, come in.
But the educators are able to witness the transformation for themselves when they graduate from the fourth. Now, as every week, a new company graduates from Paris Island, so long as the Louisville educator who are able to witness, we will have to graduate finally to get your jersey. And information are open.
So this particular scene here, this was, they had a tent set up for Marines who graduated who had no family present at the event. And so we asked the Lieutenant Colonel, we saw these young Marines, and they gave them phones so that they could call their families. But we asked them if we could go down. I mean, it was such a powerful experience to see the graduation at Paris Island and to see these young folks with nobody there to hug them and congratulate them and thank them for the work that they put in. They'd been there since February. We asked if we could jump out of the stands and go hug these kids. And we ended up taking a collection with the group that we had with. And we purchased, they had like their insignias on medals for their Lima company, their group that they graduated with. We took a collection with the educators, and we bought them all their medals that they'd be able to have for their graduation. And then a couple of the ladies who were in our group presented them to them, and the kids were crying and thanked them. It was a powerful experience. And it's something that, you know, it's not for everybody. I mean, after the day and a half, I was, the first day, I was thinking, "Oh, this isn't for me." I'm too old, but I can do it if I wanted to. But I think for some of our young people, you know, to make sure that we always have enlistment as an option for them. I had sold the jackets and all that, people that needed to come in and tell you guys about the experience. It was very cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very hard.
Thank you.
At this time, President Elswich, members of the board, I would like to have Mr. Jerry from Feustein and Sash Group to give us a presentation.
I don't work that hard, but I work really hard on I don't know if I could have done that. I appreciate the time. Thank you for having us in. In your package, the first thing that I really wanted to go through was the rates and structure. But not to necessarily go through these numbers specifically. I think it's going to help the group as a whole if I kind of explain how everything is structured. If that'll help?
Yep.
Okay. So the group is currently self-funded within a consortium. So you're a member of a consortium with other school systems, and I believe there's a city in there as well. So what the consortium does is it takes all the people from all those groups and takes it to an insurance company. But you're self-funded, right? So it's a stop-loss insurance company. It's a bigger insurance company. So don't think like Anthem or United Healthcare, stuff like that. We get the rates from the consortium. So when you see specific premium and aggregate premium and aggregate factors, that comes from the consortium. They price that based on the group as a whole. The consortium is not operating well. It's really not. I mean, I'm not saying it's not doing what it was set up to do. It is. It's spreading risk across a bunch of different large employers. But the risk in the consortium, the morbidity level, level of sickness, is kind of high across the board, including here at Mansfield. That's the insurance component. We use Medical Mutual to process and pay the claims. That's called a third-party administrator. So Medical Mutual, ready for acronyms? MMO acts as the TPA. Medical Mutual of Ohio acts as the third-party administrator. They process and pay your claims. There's also the network. So when we see the book of debt loan, we don't print books anymore. I'm dating myself. But when you see in-network, that's the Medical Mutual network. When you get a prescription drug, we use the PBM, Pharmacy Benefit Manager, that Medical Mutual uses. We get to explain to Medical Mutual how to pay those claims. So that's where we tell them, "You have a health savings account planned. This is how it works. This is how it's funded. This is what the district does. This is what the employees are responsible for." And then we have the PPO plan that sits alongside of, for a bunch of different reasons. Almost everyone is in the health savings account there. Because every year, you get money into the health savings account to help you pay your claims. So when you look through this, you're going to see maximum and expected. You can't like sit here today and say, "We know exactly what's going to happen claims-wise." So the first layer of protection in a plan like this is something called the specific deductible. That's every person in the group. So I'll use me as the example. I'm the employee, but I have a wife and I have two daughters. I have four members in my family, even though I'm just one employee. So each one of those members has a specific deductible that the district picks first. Currently, that's at $200,000. So Mansfield Schools is responsible for the first $200,000 of everybody's claims. At which point, everybody goes, "Wow." And that would be a super gigantic number. The next layer of protection is the aggregate. And again, that's what the consortium shows us. I bust it all down into what's called the aggregate factors there. So we take worst-case scenario for the group as a whole. So if you think about it, everybody could have like $190,000 in claims, and there'd be no insurance coverage. You haven't hit the 200. But the aggregate says, if we all generate claims and hit the aggregate, everybody, all the members involved, the school district is now capped. You have no more claims if you hit your aggregate. We tend to look at that in two different ways. The maximum, which is where everybody's insured, but kind of where we expect you to be. Statistically, you're going to have about high 1%, low 2% of the entire membership hit that specific deductible. So the industry calls those shock losses. So we measure as stuff's happening, and we measure against the funding suggestions internally. Those become COBRA equivalent rates. So as we go through and we're funding at certain levels and the claims come in below, the thought process is, we build a reserve account. The rainy day fund, if you will. We're coming in close to expected. We're not coming in close to max. And we'll go through that in a little bit, once I get to the lag reports. So what I'm showing you here is the 2023 rates and cost structure. It's the first page. The second page is using the 2024 rates, but with the 2023 enrollment figures, how many singles, how many families, just so we can have a snapshot. And then the last page is the 2024 rates with 2024 enrollment, single family. So far, so good. Because that's a tough time set. Everybody's card says Medical Mutual on it, but we're all in this together. The school's paying almost all the claims as we go along. But we do have those layers of protection in case there's a lag. So the next sheet says full population, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I went back in time all the way to 2020, used the old, and I'm doing it this way, rates. Because it's not really an insurance rate. It's not Medical Mutual saying, "Here's your rate." It's the factors that we just talked about coming up to funding levels. So I used the historical info that we had for '20 and '21. The first page is a summary of it, on how everything's been kind of rolling forward. And I'm sorry, I would The second page is here?
Oh, they're going, "What are you?"
Oh.
"You're in order, and you're..."
So go to the second and the last page. That'll be 2023. You can kind of see in the little shaded box down there, funding recommendations will be fostered. So as you look across the top, you see the month, how many people are enrolled in, single, how many in family, total contracts, total members, members per employee, so forth. The columns, when you start to see paid claims and total monthly cost, is kind of where we want to concentrate. And then we want to compare that to the funding recommendations. So as you're kind of looking through that there, you'll see that we do have some months where it's a negative dollar amount. We're measuring claims versus funding, while both claims were higher than the funding recommendations. But as we look across that cumulatively towards the bottom, you'll see that the funding recommendations came in at 14.2. And the actual claims, the total monthly cost, came in at 12.8. So we are sitting on a surplus from 2023. The loss ratio is basically those two numbers divided by one another. Having that less than 100% is a good thing. Should be closer to like 80%. We're at 90. But I'm also moving some of the folks out when you see total monthly costs excluding Medicare. We implemented a plan this year called a MUR. Technically, it's a health reimbursement arrangement. And when I take a look at the data, because if you listen to the data, it'll kind of tell you what to do. We're creeping pretty high when you start to look at cost per employee per year, cost per member per year, all the different measurements. But when I take a peek at the data and I see that we have some segments of the population that could use some help, there's a way to do that, which is what we started last open enrollment period. And I have a summary to go through of that as well. If you look on the last page, this is kind of the year-to-date snapshot. I know where I made, but there's a lag when it comes to claims. It's usually about 60 days, sometimes plus, sometimes it's more. So like if I went to the doctor today, it wouldn't hit Medical Mutual, and that claim wouldn't get paid for about 60 days. So that's why you're only seeing the first three months on top. And so far, so good. We're a little bit lower than that 90% threshold. We're 0.8% lower than that 90% threshold, but the line might be flattening a little bit. And we do have some pretty good ideas to get into the open enrollment as we head into next plan year, once January comes out. Kind ofly referred to as a lag report.
Joe, can I ask you a question? How many people signed up in the group? 16, thank you.
12 were not on the plan, four were. And I'll go through that in a bit. Actually, it's a nice piece of paper. They're reading ahead.
Did I ask you a question, Joe?
Sure.
The family contracts there on the second to the last page, turned out at 3:01 by December's 1:58.
Second to the last page?
Yeah.
Do I have a typo?
I don't remember. You see what I'm looking at, the family column?
Yeah, I do. That's an error. Good call, Chris.
I thought we lost 150.
You did not. You did not. That is a typo on my part.
All right.
So does that mean that loss ratio calculated and nothing, so it won't be 90? It'll be over 100?
No. Well, if you take a peek at what's going to happen here, you see the last number, that negative 752. That'll flip a little bit, but we have enough of the room and the difference with 1.4 million.
Could this 200%?
Correct.
I mean, if that number's in half, then that total loss ratio could be higher?
Yes. I will fix that and give it out to everybody.
So I have a question too. So when you said that we have a surplus, so that difference between the funding recommendation and the total monthly cost is a surplus there, does that mean that, are you saying that we're coming in under what you're budgeting for us?
I'm saying we're coming in under maximum, which is where I budgeted for you.
So you budgeted for us, for these claims to be at 14 million?
Correct.
Okay. And the human at 12.8.
Don't forget.
Is that what you're telling me?
That 14 will move, and the 12.8 will move based on
Right, so the number is, okay, gotcha.
It'll be close.
Gotcha. And what does the funding recommendation base on?
If you take a peek at the other pieces of paper, this one? The top half of the spreadsheet is U at maximum, which means that the premium is the same, the aggregate premium is the same, the aggregate factors change.
So those are based on the aggregate factors?
Correct. Which are provided to us by the consortium.
How many people are in that consortium?
I don't want to say, oh, there's 4,000 without getting an answer for it.
How many?
I think there's an eight-ish. Who runs your consortium?
Gallagher.
Interestingly enough, I've talked to the actual insurance company that handles all of the stop-loss for the Gallagher Consortium. And there's potentially things to do. We aren't the broker for the consortium yet. But I'm having those conversations behind the scenes to see if we can get invited to participate.
So we contact with Robie Foster, and Robie Foster contacts with Gallagher?
No.
Okay.
No. Before Robie Foster was in the mix, you had Gallagher. Gallagher put Mansfield into this school consortium. I've read the contract, and unfortunately, the termination clause to get out of that consortium requires written permission by all of the members. So it's a little bit of a two-edged sword, right? Our job is to come in, show you the data, analyze the data, find some ways to lower total cost. But because we have to deal with the consortium, and as we're trying to do these things to lower total cost on all the measurements, the per employee, per member, blah, blah, blah. So as we improve Mansfield's position, you're a net contributor to the consortium. So let's say there's a So let's say there's eight. And don't hold me to that, but let's say there's eight. And all eight aren't doing so hot. But all of a sudden Mansfield starts to do better and your costs are going down. Well, you're a net contributor to the other seven. They're not going to want you to do it. If you were a very sick group and claims costs were super high and you're a net recipient of being in the consortium, the other seven members of consortium would sign that piece of paper real quick. Yes, please. You can take your premature baby. And I know this was a 26 week, but you can take your premature baby and you can go buy stop-loss on your... We don't want the premature baby in the consortium.
So we're a healthier, we're a healthier mix of the eight or eight-ish. We're a positive contributor from the consortium.
You're a positive contributor?
So we're contracted with both Robby Foster and Gallagher?
You're contracted with Robby Foster.
Okay.
As your broker.
Gotcha.
We have to purchase stop-loss and reinsurance coverage through the consortium.
Because of other commitments?
Because of what happened in the past.
Commitments we've worked, commitments that we've made for a particular period of time?
Nope.
Just forever?
Yep.
So when Cindy from K-12 tells Dan during our five-year forecast meeting, you need, you need to get into the new consortium, we can't even get out of consortium or anything?
We can't even get to the consortium meetings.
So that is, it seems strange that you, we signed a lifetime contract? At what point?
From what I read in that agreement that was signed with the consortium that Gallagher put in place. And everything that I've read there says there's no compensation in it for Gallagher. Yeah, in order to terminate and get out, yes, you need the permission of all the other members to do so.
It's like a covenant.
It stabilizes the block. When I've done it in the past, we do it for three years. You know, I don't want somebody staying inside a consortium that doesn't benefit them and where they don't want to be. And if I do my job right, then no one else should be able to come in and find a better deal on stop-loss. I, I have a hand, right? I have cards in my hand. I'd love to pull a couple of aces out of there.
Something maybe a legal issue.
I was just going to say, we need to...
Yeah, we need to get some legal involvement. Okay.
I'm not an attorney.
Yes.
Neither am I.
I play one on TV from time to time.
No way. Neither am I, but...
No way. I do know them.
And we know them.
Yeah, so, yeah, okay. Thank you.
So I have a question, John.
Sure.
So should we be in the consortium that we're in? Or should we be in a different one?
I'll tell you a story. Uh, when you went through last renewal cycle for the consortium, they hit every single number for $4 per employee per month to offset high-cost drugs. Right? Anything you see on TV. Hey, if you can afford your medication, insert manufacturer name here, they might be able to help. You get that done through manufacturer assistance programs, patient assistance programs, coupon, copay cards. And a lot of times, I'm bringing drugs in from Canada. That is not what the consortium did. The consortium said, that'll be fine, we'll just hit them off for four bucks. That's not what I would have done. I'm working with a pretty large property manager in Nashville, about 1,200 employees. It took me two years to get a report on the United Healthcare. We use United Healthcare for that. I have five members, remember? Members, not employees, members? Five members out of probably close to 4,000 people that have high-cost medications. And they need them, they absolutely need them. Two years later, United sends me the report, five members. I did my thing. How much do you think we're going to save that group? Probably.
Seven dollars.
A million 49,000. Five people, five drugs, over a million dollars. Insurance companies don't want you looking there because they make a lot of money on those. United uses their own PBM, Fund and Benefit Manager, called Optum. Optum is wildly successful. I hope you all have them in your investment portfolios. It took them two years to send me that report because they knew what I was going to do with it. Should you be in a consortium? Probably for the next couple, three years. But not based on what we're finding with the MRR approach. We can clean the group up a little bit better. We can get our numbers in the right direction. If we get in front of a consortium, I've already talked to the underwriter. We're kind of ready to go. We just can't get in front of them.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
Um, I've been in consortiums off and on for my career. Usually the consortium is, it's a two-year notification and you lose your reserve. You opt out. I also was part of that meeting every month that we met. So if you're not able to go to those meetings because you're a broker and they already have a broker, maybe someone that is from one of the districts attend those meetings. Because as a consortium, you know what's going on in-house when you're at those meetings and what they vote on.
Correct.
So that, I didn't know if anyone ever here had attended those consortium meetings.
They've had.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is this common from what you're seeing other school districts that you, that you represent? Like this situation? Yeah. These rates, these costs, is this common? I mean, we all know insurance is trending up, but this is excessive, so is this what you're seeing?
You have a very rich plan design. You have an average age that is higher than most. You have claims that are higher than most. There's stuff we could do.
Is that a no, this is not common, what you're seeing on a district you represent?
No, it's not common.
Okay.
There's other districts that we represent.
And when do the new cost structures and the information for the following year come out? Is this a calendar cyclical that everything, everything resets in like September, October for next year? How does that work for these rates?
It's a January effective date. So are they supposed to get it to us in October? Yep. Do we ever get it in October? Nope.
Can you tell me the uncommon parts we're talking about?
I'm sorry?
He said ours is not common. What's uncommon about ours, he said we had a rich plan.
We have a very rich plan.
What does that mean?
Uh, the HSA contributions in and of itself are outstanding. I mean, the coverage is great.
You're talking about the parts the board puts in.
Yes. But when you look at it from like an actuarial perspective, from an underwriting perspective, you know, they take a snapshot, they look at past claims and they're like, and it's a lot more than just throwing dirt at the dartboard, but they're pretty good at it. We think you're going to spend X. Could be higher, could be lower. So they move it just north to ensure you at maximum, knowing that you're going to come in closer to expected. Does that help? Okay. Okay.
So we have some work to do.
You have some work to do. But I, I think it's, I think it's all doable.
Yeah.
Did you say it has to be on the north, you're in?
For one picture?
I don't know, can you explain a little bit?
Absolutely. So there was some, there was some thought, some thought behind? Well, hey, wait a second, we don't help people that don't take our insurance to insured elsewhere. Okay? Hey, wait a second, we have a population that could disenroll from our power, from our group plan here at Mansfield and buy something outside of the group plan, Medicare. So as we talked to some folks, it was very scary. It was, because it's not premium coming out of their paycheck, it's not supported by the school system. They're going out, they have to enroll in, well, A's automatic, but they have to enroll in part B, they have to enroll in part D. You're going to know this a lot better than I do. Then they have to buy a Medicare supplement policy. And for the plans this year, they still had, but don't enroll. Don't enroll with a prescription drug coverage. Detail where they pay. And the government pays and then part D pays for the drugs, and then it doesn't. And it's all out-of-pocket expenses to the Medicare recipient. And that's frankly just too difficult. So we put something in place, MRR stands for Medical Expense Reimbursement Plan. Technically, it's an HRA, Health Reimbursement Arrangement. So go back to the other pages and you start taking a peek at, well, hey, wait a second, the funding recommendations are here. And it comes out to roughly $18,000. Give or take a couple bucks. So roughly $18,000 per employee per year. Thirty-seven-ish thousand dollars per family per year. Okay? If we structured, well, when we structured the MRR, Health Reimbursement Arrangement, and we took all the premium that someone would have to pay and all the claims exposures that someone would have to pay and paid all of it for them, we came out to $9,000. I don't need to be a math teacher to let you know that nine is less than 18. That generates savings. But you cannot go into a group environment and say, we're building this for Medicare. You cannot do that. It is illegal and against the law. We offered this as a third plan option. So you have the PPO, which is available to you. And we kind of have to do that for the Spanish speaking, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We have the Health Savings Account Plan, which is high deductible, everyone's familiar. You get money from the district to help pay the claims throughout the year. Use that money first or second, entirely up to you. Go to your pocket to pay the difference. I have an HSA. I have a $10,000 family deductible, but I have an HSA and I take money out of my paycheck every week, every two weeks, and put it in my HSA. If I have small claims, young kids, you need a bottle of amoxicillin, the big jug of pink stuff, six bucks. I'm not going to go to my HSA and pay for it. Pay for it out of my pocket. If I have some sort of a procedure, if wife had one, daughter had one this year, and I went, wow! From university hospitals. HSA funds. Third plan option was the MRR, the Health Reimbursement Arrangement. We did have some folks that enrolled. We have, this sheet of paper is going to break it down in total, but it's also going to break it down in two different ways, and I wanted to show the difference today. So out of the 16 folks, 12 were not on your plan at all. But when they opened it up, when we opened up that third plan option, we knew we would get some of those folks to enroll. I, I can't remember her name and her husband works someplace else, and she called me and we talked for like a half hour. And she said, wow, this is awesome. Thank you so much, I explained everything and it makes a ton of sense. She was already enrolled there. But in order to help them offset the employee contributions, how much the spouse was paying out of the check. And what that claim did not cover, out-of-pocket maximum, the MRR helps them offset premium and claims. Okay? So so far, we have 12 of the 16 that fall into that. Four of the 16 were on your plan already. Two are Medicare eligible, two are not. And when you take a peek at it, total cost slash savings from HRA, it cost the district $84,000 to put the MRR in place. That's pretty straightforward, it's one year, it's nine or 18 grand. Times the number of enrolled enough to go, and that's 184,000. But when you compare the cost savings to, for those four people that were on the plan that moved off and we've now capped our exposure, if you will, that savings was $77,000, four people. Now. Was I kind of disappointed in you, or was it more like 50/50 a little bit? Because the more we can take off the plan and move to the MRR, we will find savings. But it's helping people that weren't on the group anyway.
Does the employee have to go to the MRR for their spouse or their children to go to the MRR? So say one of our employees wants to go to the MRR, but, so they would move off of our insurance and they would, they obviously, if they have coverage in our district for their spouse and kids, they would not, no longer have that. It would be through the MRR, right?
Well, the MRR is just a vehicle to reimburse them for expenses they have under another plan over there. So they'd have to have coverage over there because it's not really insurance. There's no like offices or copay or deductibles or anything. We're, we're paying them money to offset premium that they have there and claims that they have there.
So we need to educate them, our employees, of what market?
Yeah.
So, I'm just, I'm trying to understand this because I don't, it's like new to me. So if I'm an employee of our district and I'm, I've got a husband and three kids and I'm on our plan, which we've already said is a great plan, right? I'm getting it.
Great plan.
So why would I move off to this? What would be the benefit to me as an employee to move from that to this?
Personal circumstances, personal cost structure, spouse's plan, spouse's plan cost structure, employee contribution from the spouse's plan.
So assuming that my husband has a better plan and I like that it's better, I move off that and then the district reimbursed it, helped contribute to his plan? I'm, I'm just...
You have, you have a bucket of money that's available to you. It's $9,000 if you have single coverage elsewhere. Most of your people that are on, that are Medicare eligible, will kind of fall into that bucket. So $9,000 is going to be more than enough. I know you're correct. Should be more than enough to help offset premiums for part B, part D, med sub, and claims. I think that maybe some of the younger, healthier would be incentivized to stay on your plan because of the HSA deposits. Uh, we talked about that last time. I'm young, I'm healthy, why wouldn't I stay here? The employee contributions out of my paycheck are very low and you're giving me X number of dollars every January. Thank you. I'm not going to have claims, I know I'm not going to have claims. And if I'm younger and my kids are still this big and going to get strep throat every fall, I know how much that's going to cost me. I know it's an office visit and I know it's going to be a $7 bottle of amoxicillin. I'd stay here. But others may or may not. And you saw Waldberg said, this makes a lot of sense for me personally.
They were, but they were not on our insurance previous.
They were not on our insurance.
So they weren't, they weren't moving.
Correct. But if you look at these two and those two.
It's not an insurance plan.
It is not an insurance.
It's a supplement to people who have insurance elsewhere or that are on Medicare, the way I see it, am I correct? Because there used to be such thing as thought a medical reimbursement account and you would say at the beginning of the year, I'd like to set $1,000 in there. And you do payroll deductions, put the money in. What ended up happening and over the year is if they left within two months and they used all their money for the whole year, it was our loss. But if we took their deductions every month and kept them and, and didn't have any claims, then it was our win. So this is kind of a supplemental plan that helps people that have insurance elsewhere or that are on Medicare. It's not a plan they can move to. It's not a plan they can move to for regular insurance, if I may.
No, that's very good.
Pardon?
Flexible spending, but yeah.
Yeah, they were flexible spending. They had dependent care or medical reimbursement. It operated somewhat like that, but this way you're putting money in it.
Correct.
Yeah.
But the twelve, there wasn't one on the plan. They signed up for the MERC. Now it costs the district more money than what they were paying previously. And then the four people that were on the plan that moved to the MERC, we have a savings of seventy-seven thousand dollars basically. So truthfully, it's, when we say it, two thousand twenty-three coming in, two thousand twenty-four costs us more money.
Yep. And we knew that? We, we knew that would more than likely be the case, but just like what we're gonna talk about on Smart Shopper in a little bit, uh, word will spread.
Why do we know that?
We don't know anything.
No, 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 no.
Education people.
No, that's, that's my point. We had this conversation back in June. And the conversation was that I've, I've had a healthcare plan with Mansfield Senior for twenty years. And you're gonna tell me and me and my family to leave this plan and come over here to something I don't know nothing about? So that's what you're doing.
No, you're asking, no, but there's another plan that's...
No, no, absolutely.
Yeah, no, but of course, it was just an option. In a contract, it says there's always options and the MERC is one of the options that's made available and just something that was made available to the employees. And I think that you're right, it's just gonna be education about how that works for our...
That's what I was getting to.
For our, for our people who are eligible and benefit from the MERC.
That's where I was going, was that those individuals, I've been on the plan, got a medical mutual twenty years and I, and it's worked for me. You telling me I need to get off of this plan, come over here to something I don't know nothing about?
Not forcing, but just...
No, no, you're not being forced, but you, you, you're giving me an option, right? And you, and then of course, the district itself saves money. Okay? So it's a benefit, it's for everybody. But education was, it's totally different.
New way of thinking about insurance.
Absolutely. And most people don't think about it. I've been doing this for twenty years. I know exactly how it works. Over here it's different. I don't know nothing about this, other than what you tell me. So the education piece is a four, five, six month education to, to get these people ready.
Plus, I also think Gary, the testimonials, the people who moved over here will help because people who said, "It's not as scary as it sounds. It did work out the way I thought it was gonna work out. I was taken care of. Everything was on the up and up. It is look like some hope and focus trick that, you know."
So, but that's why I asked the question.
I think the testimonials will happen along with, with the education piece.
But that's, that's, that's exactly why I asked the question, because I think we missed the education.
I think that, it's just like the Smart Shopper. I think more people are using it. When we first started it, it was like scared, everyone was like, "Ah, my doctor's gonna leave tomorrow, I'm just gonna go where he tells me." But now I think people are starting to really like, "Oh, wait a minute, I can get money back."
I agree with that, but my again.
Yeah, we just gotta educate it, right?
To make that money, to save that money, it costs us more the way it was done versus if we were to spend that time to educate. That's my point.
You're right.
I, I, I agree with Gary. I, I truly do. And we were starting that process to make sure that we were falling in line on, on a timeline, if you will, to do exactly that. Um, I didn't know it was going to take seven months to negotiate a contract with other vendors that were in place at the time. So we're negotiating on the structure, we're, we're negotiating, and it was an attorney from Mansfield and the vendor to put you with. That should've taken thirty days, tops. It took two-hundred-and-ten days. And we missed the education window. Okay? So that's why I was saying, I, I kind of expected to have some folks saying, "I want the MERC even though I haven't been on your plan, 'cause you're gonna help me with my spouse's premiums and claims that I have out-of-pocket over there." I, I knew we'd be upside down, but we had to get it and get it in place as the third option, very, very similar to what you have now. You can enroll in the PPO plan, you don't know what it does.
Well, remember how long it took to get to HSA, where everybody understood how that worked and all the stuff needed to happen on the pieces? I mean, that took a couple of years. That took a couple of years back then. I mean, people were using it, they, they didn't realize what it was, how it worked, right in text, right in the card, did, didn't know, they didn't know. But I, I think that education process has happened now, as you understand, this is big thing.
You saying that you think the education process happens with the HSA or the MERC?
Well, it did with the HSA.
Okay.
Not with the MERC, but again, it's just gonna take some time.
Okay.
So update myself again a little bit. The first HSA account I put in place is actually the old version, Medical Savings Accounts. And I had to deal with this woman who went to Blockbuster, digging myself, and used her medical savings account card to pay her late fees. And I said, "I cannot make an argument to the Internal Revenue Service that that was medically necessary. If it was a hot tub, maybe." So she paid penalty and fines and all that stuff. So I mean, that's, that's just an example. Uh, I, and, and to your point, Linda, Smart Shopper took up on a, on a very flat slope. But we do have one of the employees here that I think is over a thousand bucks already of reimbursement through Smart Shopper. And the, the person that's using it the most has earned a thousand dollars in Medicare so far. Think about that.
It, it works. I, I, I get, I get checks back, you pick where you go to, you know what I mean? You just don't go to where your doctor says, "Go here, go down the street." You, you look on the, this, this, you know, these are the ones that are running. The sixty dollar checks come in, come in regularly. I cash every one of them.
I, I didn't send any personally, this is out of commercial.
And when you get a check, the district saves money too.
Well, sure, because I'm, I'm selecting to go to the guy that's charging fifteen hundred versus the guy that's charging twenty-two hundred dollars.
Right.
So that's seven hundred dollar savings, who gives me sixty bucks. It's different, not from different procedures, but, yeah. So you're, you're saving seven hundred, I get sixty hundred or seventy, whatever. Small percentage.
The classic example is blood work. Everybody goes to the doctor, everybody's like, "Hey, it's time to come in. We gotta go a week early and get your blood drawn." So just go to the little office down the hall from me. Let's go to the hospital. Oh, okay. I, I know my market a lot better. And when you said at Cleveland, it's about a hundred and fifty bucks for blood work. You know what's that cost? About five. It's about five bucks. Go to Quest, go to LabCorp. It might be ten, it might be twenty. But to your point, Chris, you're going for every single blood draw for every single member in the union and you save a hundred bucks per draw for the entire year?
Sure.
You give them sixty dollar checks all day long, 'cause maybe ten percent of what the total savings is.
And the reason we talk about this is because this is the thinking outside the box piece that as we have this, that we're dealing with, how do we fix it? How do we save money? How do we do better? And these are the two ideas we've brought forward and that we're working on to, to do that, to deal with.
Absolutely. Can I pick on you a little bit?
Me?
Sure. So I remember the first meeting that we were in with you. And it was a little...
Yeah.
But I thought it was enlightening. I, I saw the light bulb moment happen when I explained to you how a self-funded plan works. And you said something that stuck with me to today. The, the mindset of the entire group is, once I get past my deductible, I don't care because now it's all medical mutual. And I was like, Brad, you have a specific deductible. You guys are self-funded, you're on the hook, all the way up to that specific deductible. It's not medical mutual's pocket, you guys are taking cash out of it. It's your own. So Kelly and I, as far as education pieces and open enrollments and all that other stuff, we need to drill into everybody's head as, as much as we can get in there, but if you structure something that makes sense for the members of your plan, that helps the bottom line of the plan, it's a win-win. The only person that loses is maybe, where can I start here? Maybe. Medical mutual a little bit? But do I care about them? No, not really. You're my client, I care about this group. There's a lot of other things that could come out later, but we're a little, I wanna say constrained with the vendors, are constrained with the vendors. So like my United Healthcare example before, two years to get a report out of United Healthcare, there's a reason why. And I found out why. So far so good? Anybody? Okay. Smart Shopper. It's working and this little packet is gonna show you proof of concept. It's absolutely working. The problem is we're not utilizing it enough. So just like you were saying before, as people get used to it and people start using Smart Shopper and they get a sixty dollar check in the mail and they think, "Well, what was that for?" Uh, oh, yeah. I didn't get my blood work there, I went to Quest. I didn't get my, I didn't go there for that procedure for three thousand, I went there for fifteen hundred and I worked it through Smart Shopper and thank you for my reward.
And it's not like that, that you're getting just some guy in the back alley doing these procedures. These are reputable organizations, you know. You know, the difference between Mansfield Hospital and Shelby Hospital, they're the same hospital company, but there's different costs. Just driving over to Shelby and I, I saved several hundred dollars, that's real simple. I mean, Shelby's not that far. And even with that, you know, if I'm going to Shelby Hospital instead of Mansfield Hospital, it's just that simple stuff. So it's not like this is, you know, dark alley stuff we're talking about. These are reputable organizations, they're these cheaper.
Without boring you with the technology behind the scenes, but you know, the no surprise attack and all these other things about transparency in healthcare, um, there's an entity out there called Healthcare Blue Book. And Healthcare Blue Book works just like their cars, the car blue book stuff. "Hey, what kind of car do you have?" "I have this kind of car." "What kind of miles?" "Oh, I have this, this, this." "Ever been in an accident?" No. Healthcare Blue Book works kind of the same way. You, you can go in and you search plain English, you don't need to know the C P T codes or the I C P ten or any kind of other nonsense, insurance or anything. You can search ankle X-ray. You can search colonoscopy, just search it. Healthcare Blue Book is the engine behind Smart Shopper. Smart Shopper is just kinda like the marketing name that Medical Mutual puts on it. The company's name is jealous. And you log on and they rank everybody in the country, anywhere, and they actually put quality metrics on there. So if you want low cost with green, 'cause they rank the docs and everybody else that you can get a procedure from, green, yellow, red. So low cost with green, high quality, that's who you're looking for. And that triggers the largest reimbursement on a Smart Shopper.
And the brilliant thing about Smart Shopper? I have to do nothing. I don't have to fill out paperwork, I don't, they just know, they just, "That means a check." There's nothing I have to do, no extra work. I have to look out where to go on the front side of it. But that check doesn't take any time, you know, nothing I have to do. I don't have to fill out paperwork, bother the treasurer, call jail, or...
Yeah, you don't, you don't call.
Magic money.
It is, and I have to check in the mail and then do anything.
Yeah?
See, we've been hard to get.
There you go. And just, just to circle back real quick to the MERC, it's actually set up roughly the same way. There are checks and balances in that system, we need pay stubs. Uh, so I would like to do that quarterly, 'cause, uh, I'm working and, I'm working here, you're my spouse. I don't like, "Oh, I like MERC, 'cause we're going on limits policy." And then that works for like a couple, three weeks and then you lose your job or you decide to move or whatever happens. We want that justification so we can tie the premium that we're paying back to that paycheck, back to, you, you told me it's a hundred bucks a pay. Well, you moved someplace else and now it's fifty bucks a pay. We're gonna cut the premium back to you and lower it down to where it actually is. The claims side will still be there. And the swiping card to pay the claims is a smart card, can't use it at Blockbuster, must be used for eligible medical expenses that would be out-of-pocket to you on your policy.
I want to ask you a question about that.
Sure.
If you are eligible for Medicare and you go on Part B, you say you have to have a supplement, how am I saving money? I'm paying for a supplement and for Medicare now.
Correct.
So why would I give up our benefits?
Because when...
So how, how is that gonna help me? I'm paying out double at least for a supplement and Medicare. Okay?
Right.
So how are you gonna make sure I'm not paying any more than I'm paying now?
When we took a peek, and we did it based on zip codes around here, and I keep looking at Kelly, 'cause she's the Medicare expert, um, when you, when you look at all the numbers and shake it all out and you add the Part B premium that you have to pay, and you add the Part D premium.
I'm not having Part D.
If you don't, there's, and I'll let you answer that part, but if you...
Gary can do it.
Very good. There's a, there's a penalty if you don't enroll in D.
How much is D?
Well, she asked, she knows about the MERC.
You can run you as much as thirty bucks a month or eighty bucks a month.
Well, the MERC can reimburse you.
Correct.
But what he's saying is one hundred percent correct. The MERC will reimburse you for every dime of it.
Plus Part A, Part D, supplement, all of it.
And your...
All right. And all that gets reimbursed.
Yes.
Your exposure is...
Up to myself.
Right.
For you.
And just so you know, with your Medicare, the only deductible you have if you have a Plan G is your two-hundred-and-forty dollars of your Part B, so it's a way less deductible.
And then the MERC will pay that?
Correct.
And the MERC will pay that?
So technically, they become a hundred percent covered.
I'm not letting their pays great, 'cause they pay great for my husband.
But when we, when we look at it, we, we didn't wanna put any of the members of the group in a situation where if they decided to go to the MERC, the Health Reimbursement Arrangement, I just like saying that, like in my head, it's a muppet.
That's what I thought.
We wanted to make sure that the bucket of money that each enrollee would have available to them would cover all the premium exposure and all the claims that you could have with your Medicare supplement advice. Does that make sense? Like the, the donor hole was the big scary...
I mean, I don't have a supplement. I, I don't have Medicare yet. I, I got a good one.
Yeah.
And I could do that.
You could.
And I'm, I'm pretty healthy, trust me, but you never know.
Well, and that comes back to the educational piece where, like, I sat with a couple people and outlined the actual financial risk out of their pocket, that here's your premium, here's what happens if you have a claim doing this versus doing this. 'Cause that's the only way you can really compare, is to look at your actual financial guarantee risk out of your pocket. That's the only way you can really compare. And for some people, it was so much better to do that. So I think, you know, when the point in time comes, if you wanna sit down and do that, we can, we can do that as well and then that will give you a more educated, um, informa- you know, information to make more educated decisions.
Because as I was saying, a lot of us are not educated.
That's okay.
Yeah.
You don't want me writing an English paper for you. But it, it continues to get more confusing as more regulations get thrown on top of these things. So what, what I was doing back in the mid-nineties is finally starting to come back around again and it all just kinda recycles through. But if, if we look at what would the average person need to pay... But if we look at what would the average person need to pay premiums, pay all the premiums and pay all the claims? We kind of work backwards. So, Kelly quoted a bunch of Medicare stuff and I'm like, "Okay, say I'm sixty-eight and I live in that zip code." What's my med stuff look like? Okay, now I'm seventy-two and female and I live in that zip code. What's that cost structure? So, we kind of just backed all the way back into it. But we also knew that the nine brand, the magic number, was also going to be attractive to those folks that had a spouse paying premium out of their paycheck at ABC Manufacturing. And then depending on what that schedule of numbers looked like, there was out-of-pocket there, too. So, that's why I keep going back, like, the people that got it, did not work on the plan, got it quickly. But Kelly was also here with the enrollers and all that other stuff. Maybe it makes sense to have a group session and then we wait afterwards. And then people can schedule time to come in and talk to us and all that kind of stuff. More than happy to do it. More than happy. Takes me two hours to get here.
I think everybody already knows that Kelly, if you just stand up and wave at everybody, she's the person who'll be in the school whenever you ask. She's the person you'll see during enrollment periods. And she's the one that I think anybody here who's dealt with things knows her and knows they contact her at any point.
But she gets answers quickly.
Yes. Right.
Right.
Yes. I mean, I didn't start with this, like, I should have, but Keystone, I work for Keystone. Keystone's almost like a franchise. Robie Foster is our partner in Mansfield. And partner, I use that term a lot. I'm responsible for all of the Robie Fosters in New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Ohio, Michigan, and Indiana. Our partners bring us in when we need stuff. I do a lot of self-funded plans, but if it's a sick of argument, Robie Foster needs to work in bonding work. We have an entire bonding division. Also, thirty-nine states, about four-hundred partners. And we represent seven billion dollars in property casualty premiums. So, it's not like it's a small entity, but it helps our partners smash all their hooks together. And we do get better deals a lot of times. It's through the Keystone relationships that we're already talking to the soft plus carriers that the consortium has in place.
Thank you, Jill. Does anybody have any questions about all this good stuff?
Is everybody thoroughly confused?
Yes.
Of course. Feel free to give out my email, my contact info, any questions.
We need contact, Jill, and Joe for anybody.
Please.
And we should set up some educational meetings. Thank you for coming, Jill. I appreciate it.
Of course. Thank you for having me.
Okay. Do we have any public participation?
No.
No. Okay. Do we have any board member comments? No. Under Board Matters, number six, I'm going to move that we approve the 2024 Mansfield Senior High Graduates. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right.
Mr. Elgin?
Yes.
Mr. Bagan?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Ms. Tine?
Yes.
All right. And under the next piece, the Calendar Committee has submitted a school calendar for 2024-25 school year. May I have a motion to approve that calendar? Second?
Second.
Thank you.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Ms. Tine?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Bagan?
Yes.
And the OTC has revamped the cost for ticket prices next school year. Most of the schools in our college have gone to eight for adults and five dollars for students. And they have a motion to approve the new ticket prices for 24-25 school year.
Motion?
For a second?
Second.
Ms. Tine?
Yes.
Mr. Bagan?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Elgin?
Yes. And then under the Part D for the Policy Board Updates, they've been reviewed by the Policy Committee or being submitted this evening for a first reading. And now that moves us up to the Superintendent's Report.
Mr. President, Elgin, members of the board, I have two items to discuss. Last week, once again, we had an orchestra, playing orchestra concert for our new school in high school. And as always, our orchestra has just done a great job. I can't say enough about the work of Mr. Donka, our orchestra teacher, who just continues just to impress what he is doing with our students throughout the school district. Then number two, last Thursday, we had a Piece on My Block Community Fair. It was just absolutely beautiful. The work of Tom Hager, Dr. Amy Bradley, Jacob Orange, John Beasley, Andrea Moyer, and the rest of their team for this special event was just amazing. And I think that from the time that we started in August when we passed out bracelets for Piece on My Block and went to city council, glad, and I was at city council and asked city council to endorse Piece on My Block and then finished up with our May Community Fair is really great and has put pressure on the high schools. They're doing theirs this August.
I'm not sure that's top.
Okay. But they're going to do theirs this August for grades nine through twelve. But I don't know what the official count was that night, last Thursday, but I will put it into several thousand that was there. So, just a wonderful, wonderful program. And I just want to thank the committee and Tom Hager for that.
Yes, I was there. My grandson was there. He enjoyed it thoroughly. A lot of great stuff for the kids to be part of on the practice field. And then we had a fireworks display that, and I'm old enough to remember when they used to have fireworks displays in our own fields. And I don't remember any Fourth of July fireworks display being that good. I mean, it was amazing. My grandson thought it was amazing. And, you know, I think the whole community thought it was amazing. Thank you to everybody involved. Anybody else have anything? Okay, let's move to the Treasurer's Report.
I'll ask the board to approve the following items tonight. We'll have the board minutes from... I think that's wrong. Pardon? Yeah. We had a special board meeting on April thirtieth and a board meeting on May seventh. So, I ask the board to approve those. Oh, no. Where? I don't see those on here. They're here.
They're here.
They're here. Or they are. Sorry about that. I also like to thank and have the board approve to accept the donations that we received. Two-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar donation from Progressive Insurance to the teacher's account at STEM Spring Mill Elementary. Two-hundred-dollar donation from Spicy Nails and Spa toward a staff luncheon, Spanish immersion. Five-thousand-dollar donation from the Mansfield Fire Department Recreation Club to be used for educational purposes. A hundred dollars from John C. Robie to the safety program. Donations to the Piece on My Block Community Fair, which were quite a few, so we're happy for that. Fifty dollars from Altrusa International Mansfield. Five hundred from Ambeth Post Twenty-Six. Five hundred from Bob and Bob Door Company. Two thousand from Crossroads Church, Park Avenue West. Two hundred dollars from Crystal Care Center. Two fifty from Gorman Rupp City Fund. Two fifty, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars from Hall Communication Incorporated. Hundred dollars from Ann Curtis. Three hundred dollars from Maddox Memorial Church of God and Christ. Hundred dollars from Mansfield Professional Colony. Three hundred dollars from Mechanic Bank. Two hundred dollars from Mount Herman Baptist Church. Two hundred and fifty from Park National Bank. Hundred dollars from Rocket Chevrolet. Fifty dollars from Farrah Shell. Two hundred and fifty from Schmidt Security. Two hundred from SSM Incorporated. Five hundred from Storyside Church. Two hundred from the Center for Individual and Family Services. A thousand from Tiger Booster Employees. And five hundred from United Way of Richland County. And we all know how helpful for the donations and we appreciate it. Also have part of the Treasurer's Report, the April Financials, that was in your packet. I was not here in April, but they were included in your packet and completed by Jerry Gombach in our office and does a very nice job. So, I'll ask the board to approve the Treasurer's items this evening.
Does anybody have any questions under those? And I'll accept a motion to approve those Treasurer's items. Second?
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Ms. Tine?
Yes.
Mr. Bagan?
Yes.
Mr. Elgin?
Yes. Now, we move to contracts, Superintendent's recommend contracts.
Yes, President Elgin, the only contract that we have this evening is the MOU with Catalyst Life Services. And this is a renewal MOU for the 2024-2025 school year. Catalyst provides audiology, DHL, teacher interpreting services as needed for the district.
Anybody have any questions on that contract? Do you have a motion to approve that contract?
I'm a...
For a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Ms. Tine?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Bagan?
Yes.
Mr. Elgin?
Yes. And then under number ten, Superintendent's recommended Personnel Actions. Is there anything you want to talk about? Are these customary?
Our personnel actions are usual and customary for this month. We do have some extended time supplemental and for our counselors, there is an item that we believe is table on item I.
So, then I'll ask for a motion to approve Personnel Actions A through eight. For a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Ms. Tine?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Bagan?
Yes.
Mr. Elgin?
Yes. And with that, I'll make a motion that we go into an executive session to consider the employment of a public employer official, prepare for conducting or doing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms or conditions of their employment. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Elgin?
Yes.
Ms. Tine?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Bagan?
Yes.
We will not be voting when we come back.
How's it going?
Good. How are you?